Okay. This is a meeting of the Hamilton Board of Selectmen and Board of Health on December 21st, 2020, in the Selectmen's office at 6:00 PM. The meeting is being conducted remotely using video conferencing technology as approved by Governor Baker's order of March 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves? Please indicate in some way. Seeing none. The first item on the agenda, we have a bunch of minutes from previous meetings. So I got September 14th, 2020.
Make a motion.
I move to accept the meetings, the meeting minutes of September 14th.
All in favor? All right. The next one is September 21st one? Yeah? Yeah. So September 21st, 2020. It's not on the agenda, but we got those done too.
I'm not reading your comment at the bottom there. Much of the discussion was unintelligible. At least you didn't say unintelligible. Yeah, would have been bad.
I was next to my computer and I...
You got the bottom line. You got the, you got the bottom line.
They couldn't decipher our close caption.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to accept the minute, meeting minutes of the 21st.
All in favor? All right. September 28th, 2020.
There wasn't executive section that we need or not? It sort of missed or forgot to add it?
The 21st?
Yeah, do we, we already approved those.
Well...
Oh, yes. Never was.
Yes.
Those.
September 28th, 2020.
Do we own that land yet or not?
No.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of September 20th.
Is Mary Ellen all in favor? All right. Minutes of November 9th, according to...
Happy to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes of November 9th.
All in favor? The minutes of November 16th?
No, I... Yeah. We already booked it through 16th.
16th is already booked?
Yeah.
All right. Minutes of November 23rd, 2020.
I do have to say, I appreciate that the minutes are getting more concise and I think that's important. You give us some thought process. I'll make a motion to approve the minute, meeting minutes of November 23rd, 2020.
All in favor? All right. I saw it today.
And now I can take...
We're almost, we've almost talked today.
I'm gonna do a final, doing a final work.
Over them.
Uh, natural planning committee.
Meeting tomorrow. Two items on the agenda. One is to talk about structure. And secondly, it was agreed at the last meeting that we would focus on the regional school capital plan. So Mara has applied that for us and that'll be the focus tomorrow then.
I thought we saw the one that came with the, with the Wolverhampton. I didn't see one for the Stanley School, but just coming in.
Yes.
Cause I think the one that was distributed was the Wolverhampton.
Right, there were two of them.
I didn't see the handle on them.
Okay. Okay. And I'm also going to distribute this bylaw that was requested by one of the members, actually the treasurer of all, that said he thought it was a good idea, but somehow in the discussion it got lost and said it's worth reconsidering.
Proposed bylaw?
Yes. No.
I, I, the proposal that, is this what, the proposal that I had, does it sound like, does it sound like a joke to me?
No.
Can anybody hear me? No.
Does he press the button to take over? Is that, you have like a they switch between you on that one?
I can't, yeah, no. Doesn't seem like it. Okay. The, a couple of weeks ago, I brought in a capital planning committee overview. And it did, it, it didn't seem to meet with enthusiastic support. And it has stirred up several of the people and I think it's getting more attention than it's really worth. So I have, am suggesting that we withdraw that idea, okay? And that instead of that, we put in the policy manual how committees will be established in the future. I think changing the planning committee now is, is untenable, okay? I mean, it has, it's an established committee that's been working off and on for a while. And so it's sort of got its, got its road set for it. The, the new proposal that I'm bringing is for the policy manual that, that we can add things to, our selectmen's policy manual, okay? And it says periodically, the Board of Selectmen may see the need to establish a committee to address specific needs. Such a committee, these are the pertinent points, such a committee should be limited in number, and I put parentheses, five to seven members, and include a broad cross-section of town residents. Committee members will be appointed by a vote of the board and will serve one-year term. Each committee will be given, one, a specific mission and goal statement with defined dates, two, an organizational structure, and three, interim and final report dates. Okay? So the other thing we will just, if everybody is in agreement, we can just put aside. And if everybody is, likes this or wants to review this, wants to, you know, modify it in some way, we can do that. And then, but we will at least have, so going forward, if we should establish a committee like somebody suggested, a committee the other day on the sidewalks, I think it was on. So if we decided to do that, this is what, how we would go forward from this point on if the committee, if the board is looking, is in agreement. And we don't have to decide that tonight. It can be decided next week or it can be decided whenever.
And just so, any committee, whether it's formalized in a bylaw or not, where you have selectmen making an appointment, will be required to have posted meetings.
How about, now how about...
We could add that in here. We could add in here.
How about other boards that make, for instance, when I was on the planning board, we had subcommittees as well. I said, let me get the committee to rewrite the bylaws back in 2000.
Are those then subject to that as well, Bob?
They're subject to the open meeting law?
No.
Or to the post, the right posting?
So the posting you're talking about is not just the selectmen's, any board that makes a committee. So we should share that policy with other boards as well?
I can put a, I can put a, I can put a statement, you know, about the open meeting, that all committees that are appointed by, by the selectmen are governed by the open meeting law.
Well, what I'm saying is other boards can also appoint subcommittees. So we should share this with them. That maybe as part, other boards do have policy manuals and we should share that with them.
I got it. Any board in selectmen, okay? And then if you want to make changes to this, I can email this to, well, I don't do, I don't like to do a lot of emailing, but we can, the, the pertinent things were, should be limited in number five to seven, whether we're comfortable with that. Will include a broad cross-section of town residents. Well, that's sort of a given. Will be appointed by the board is another issue. Will serve one-year terms is another issue. There have been some, some committees have staggering terms. And will be given, these three things that they will be given are a mission and goal statement. So this is why we're appointing you to do this, whatever the thing, whatever the this is, an organizational structure, okay? The meetings will be run by the town administrator and we'll meet monthly or whatever, whatever we would decide. And we'll have interim and final report dates. We expect to hear back from you in six months, a month, on a monthly basis, every bi-weekly, whatever, oops, excuse me, whatever we decide is meaningful for us and gives them enough time to do the work that they have to do.
I don't have any concern with that. What I do have a concern is a general overview, is that we're very good at recreating the wheel for everything that happens. And for example, we have a capital planning committee that we decided what, what the makeup would be, but we have a bylaw, or not a bylaw, but a failed bylaw, proposed bylaw that doesn't match what we, the policy that was established. We have a financial policies section in our financial policy that talks about it, but it doesn't talk about the membership. It talks about what, what the goal should be. So that's one of the things that when we talk about our objectives for next year is that a way for us to get everything together in one spot so we don't keep creating anything. Another example is the sidewalk committee. We have a, we, we have the money from the mitigation fund. We've had a $25,000 grant where they've laid out the sidewalks and that type of thing. At one point, we had a sidewalk committee. At one point, allegedly, the planning board had developers put money aside for sidewalks. So there's gotta be a way that we could each...
Luckily, we have photographs of the checks.
But we don't know where the money is. So we don't, and so though, you know, we need, we need to set up a system where all those, we can...
I would agree.
Waste as little time as possible getting these things done because we have, most of this has been done by previous boards and planning board and selectmen or, or even the, I believe the open space committee did something about sidewalks and that, and bike paths and that type of thing, you know? So we should be able to put all that stuff together somehow.
I, I would agree with that. I think that along with having it all together, we ought to simplify it so that there's clarity. Sometimes these things are so lengthy and convoluted that we don't have clarity. If I went to the Board A and said, can you tell me what your mission is? They go, uh, well, we're, you know? Or can you tell me what your reporting system is? I mean, I, I think it's gotta be relatively simple and clear and all in one space. I will definitely agree with that. I looked for planning, planning committee stuff and I was unsuccessful. I didn't look at it as extensively as I might have, but I, so it's not all in one spot. I will have to say that, that's true. So we can, we can, we can put this, we can put this all to bed, just period. But it does seem to me that we ought to have some guidelines as to how we establish committees. I mean, you can't just say, hello, let's do a committee.
I agree with that. I agree with that. And tomorrow, when you meet with your, the planning committee's gonna be tomorrow, right? You can maybe get a one-page that everyone agrees on what the mission is and how we're gonna do it, okay? All right, you gotta copies of those?
To the bottom, we're gonna add, and give one to, to Mr. Marco too, so he can use it as a...
We're gonna add...
We're gonna add, open meeting law guidance for, for all boards and selectmen making appointments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
This is Nancy Ziver. I would just like to, I would just like to comment, having served for seven years on the first council on aging, that a one-year term, if someone's new to, A, serving on a public body in the town and then no, understanding what their mission is, I'll use Mary Ellen's word, you need more than a year. And so the, the council on aging is, and has been appointed by the selectmen and they're for terms of three years. So...
I can appreciate that comment. I mean, I think, I, I did debate, you know, what, what, what term to put in here. And I did note that many places have one year, two years, three years, and then they stagger off, you know, that kind of thing. I put one year because I thought you can always reappoint every year and at least it lets you keep, it lets you keep a chain of command.
Well, I, I think it depends on the committee. A capital planning committee would be something that you would think would be around for a long time.
You wanna start with stagger terms and then reappoint.
Right. A sidewalk committee might be for the term of a year or like we had the, the fire chief's study committee, which was, you know, six months until done, right? Right, so, okay. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome. We could just almost take that section out if you want and not have how long it will be and just bury it.
Yeah.
Just take out that, that line. Will be appointed by the board of, of the board selection.
Okay, anything else on the capital planning committee? It's gonna be tomorrow. We'll have all the capital plans by Wednesday.
And the funding in order.
Go and move forward from there. The next item on our agenda is the selectmen's goal setting for 2021. And I provided, I sent a list to, to everyone. What do you have here?
Like this?
Are you through?
Put your list.
Oh, mine is, okay. So these, these are in, it's not so much, I don't know if it's so much of a goals, they are things we gotta get done. And then the next...
Task.
It's more of a task list. And the first thing on it... The first thing on, on my list was FYI, the police chief has resigned effective January 16th, 2021, to take a position with the Executive Office of Public Safety in Boston. So we'll be... So we'll, the police, so we'll be needing to appoint an interim police chief and set up a process for selecting a new police chief and, new police chief. Okay. We have the dispatch decision. We have to decide on that. And that bears with it, if, if we decide to consolidate, there's a whole implementation process. And if we decide not to consolidate, there we have contract negotiations with them. And their contract expires on June 30th, 2020. We have the Collins Study Implementation and Compensation and Reorganization Plan, which we'll hear about next week. The installation of the ventilation system in the fire station. We have the Complete Emergency Communications Project with the town voted back in November 2019. Now they, they're projecting the completion date won't be till sometime in April 2021. I, for the police chief search replacement contract, we have contract negotiation with the police. Their contract expires June 30th. We have to decide on the use of the casino mitigation funds. How that'll be applied. We have the continuing pandemic issues, obviously. We have TA, the Town Administrator Search Committee, what we wanted to search, what we want to do there. We want to go full-time or see what's gonna happen there. We have a, obviously our town meeting and our annual budget preparation. Our public health agents retiring in August, and that'll be on the agenda tonight with the Wolverhampton Board of Selectmen to talk us a little bit about that. We have the senior center feasibility study. We have the capital planning. We have the fire station feasibility study, which is completed. And I imagine capital planning will look at that too and see what, where, what, how that fits in. The school litigation is still out there. We have to make a decision there, what's gonna happen with that. We have the highway garage expansion. We've, we've, the town has already voted a certain amount of money. It wasn't enough, so do we want to supplement that at the next town meeting, whenever? We have the senior centers, in the senior center study committee. And obviously, any other thing that comes before us unexpectedly or anything. Anybody got anything to add?
I think you left it short, Don. I really think we need tasks for March and going forward after that. That's a great list, a great list of summary of people who think that we just sit around and eat bonbons. No, we have a lot of things and we are very appreciative of the people that give us ideas as well. I know that Don and Mary Ellen are out in the community as well as I, and we appreciate everybody giving their ideas to us. We listen. And I think that's important that you all understand, we do listen. Couple of things that I had, I really think it's important to focus on reducing, in my word, the tax burden on residents. I know we did drop the tax rate this year, but we did have a rebound. Comp values went up, so therefore people who are gonna get their tax bills, and I was handed mine by Eva tonight, thank you Eva, may see an increase even though the tax rate went down. So how do we mitigate that? I think it's incumbent upon the board to work with community leaders, other boards as well, to find other ways to offset the burden on just the property tax. Whether it's making it more attractive for the businesses in town to expand themselves, bring new ones in, some way that we can keep our residential appearance, but still make it affordable for people, especially seniors, to live in town. And this board has been committed to looking at our budget and making sure that every dollar is wisely spent. But costs do go up, just like do in personal life, they go up in this town as well. Just like Don talked about the Collins Study, the people that work for the town need to be fairly compensated for what they do. And those costs go up. Public outreach. This board has been totally committed to that, both in Zoom and when the pandemic ends, and I'll defer to Don being the pharmacist as the one that is, we're still committed to, you know, allowing public outreach via Zoom, et cetera. Those who don't want to come down and enjoy our presence, our physical presence can still watch the meetings online. But I think, as I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, I had asked, Bob, is there a way we can use some of this COVID cares money to expand our media presence? That is by equipment, perhaps provide our own channel. We're gonna talk to the cable company about what's needed to put a channel out on the cable box. We have people who have volunteered their services to talk about a YouTube channel as well. That's what we need to do. People need to understand, we don't work in a vacuum here. We work in a way that's interactive with the community. And again, policy, expansion of policies. Mary Ellen's done a good job in bringing policies forward to the board and putting them out in the light so we can work on them. I think that's some of the goals for our board going forward.
Well, I, I took a different approach. I gave a global statement and then used part of your list and part of what you have said and then part of my list to come up with points of how you would get that. So for example, the first thing I said was to enhance the overall efficiency of the town's employees, ensure the best work environment, and provide the most economical management of the town's resources. And then I said, these are the ways we will do that. We will use the Collins Stud, and I have statements under each of these, but we will use the Collins Study. We will do, use an annual goal setting and evaluation structure for all employees. We will implement by June of 21. We will secure an interim police chief, begin a, a search for the chief in, for a permanent chief, and then secure that chief. We will engage in contract negotiations. We will finalize the dispatch services. We will plan for capital improvements, ranging from the senior center to the highway, to the fire station, the casino mitigation project, and we will address staffing needs of the Board of Health. So I just, I, the goal was the big thing and then the task list were the means of getting to whatever that goal was, okay? The second one I put for, on my list for a goal was to promote and enhance transparency. And it would, we would sponsor quarterly in-person or Zoom forums. We will direct development of it. I don't know if this can happen. We will direct the development of a database of residents requesting updates on topics before the board. And under that would obviously fall public outreach, which was what John just mentioned. And so that was a, an effort for transparency, it would seem to me. And then the third one, I, so I had three goals. And the third one I had was to promote better organization and operation of the board. And I put, because this is my hangup, the board will minimize the use of email to ensure compliance with the open meeting law and prevent unnecessary deliberations outside its meetings. And then materials for board meetings will be sent to selectmen in one packet on the Friday before each meeting. Because I find it a little confusing, like when we get two or three different agendas and I'm pulling up the wrong one or the right one or not knowing where we stand. Those, the last section, we don't necessarily have to include, or we don't have to include any of these. But I do think they've gotta be in an organized way and you gotta be able to zero in on what really is the goal.
I thought I'd go back and update the list that I gave you about six months ago, all the projects that you are involved with. And it comes out for 50. It's in the, kind of, the chair report.
It is, it is incredible.
It is? It's astonishing. I mean, some are still, yeah.
Some are completed and some are not, yeah.
But I mean, that's just all the things that are going on and where there's some select board involvement.
Jared, do you think that we've given our, our three things and perhaps Bob could take notes on what we've done here, assimilate them and bring them back to the board as what he sees our goals for? Rather than...
We got goals, we got, we got tasks.
Right. Not, not, I know you have Christmas, maybe the day after Christmas you could work on that, Bob. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I had a couple of suggestions that you might be interested in for your goals. One is to follow the open meeting law. I noticed today, there is no date on the agenda. And then a couple of weeks ago, when you had the hearing, it did not have the pertinent information that was in the ads that were put in the paper about the hearing. And then at times, the, when the board members discuss different documents, those should be listed at the end of the meeting per the open meeting law handbook.
What hearing are you talking about?
The hearing for the land trust.
No. Was it land trust? It was Sheri Himmelstein and the...
Right. Right, but she changed it to be part of the land trust abutting land.
I don't know what you're talking about. Sorry.
The specifics were not in the notice, the agenda notice. Do we know that?
Remember you went, we have a poll hearing about this land. All of a sudden was on the agenda. We're like, where'd this come from? And then Sheri showed up after, we already voted and she came into the meeting.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out what was missing.
There was really no, no, why, there was no background to it in the agenda, really. I think Mary Ellen and I both...
What is it?
All right.
Thank you, Tony.
And I think we are sensitive to the open meeting law. We all, we all try to always abide by it. So those suggestions are, I've listed them on my paper. Thank you.
Anything else on the, the goal setting?
No, I'll come back to the board after we compose the three suggestions, the suggestions for the three members.
I, I do have to say that, I do have to comment that, with the police chief's resignation, you know, I appreciate what he's done for the town and I also appreciate his need to move on in his career. It's at a difficult time for us because we have the consolidation, we have this emergency communications, we have contract negotiations. So, you know, it's gonna be a lot on the interim person and I think he's gonna need, whoever she, he or she is, is gonna need some support there. The next item is the dispatch... The next item is the dispatch update. You got a tour?
We had a tour. I I can give my reaction, and then Mr. Markle maybe can give his reaction. Again, I went through the various topics that that were discussed and tried to do a comparison between Westcom and Wilbraham and what they each said. The equipment in both places is new, so the equipment was very similar, I thought. The setting in which the dispatcher's operator was was very different. Wilbraham's is is new. They had two stations. Westcom's is older. The facility is older, I think, and the a room is much more crowded. They had six stations, and both areas had meeting and meeting areas that they could use. Wilbraham's was a multi-function, which I think we've been all been in that room that they have. And Westcom has a regular auditorium kind of room that they use. The staffing, there were 16 dispatchers employed in Westcom, which goes six first shift, six second shift, and four the third shift. And the there were five dispatchers in Wilbraham, two the first shift, two the second shift, and one on the third shift. The crowdedness and the older facility at Westcom is being addressed. They are settling or signing a contract on January 18th for the purchase of Salter College. They think that they have an architect looking at it, and then it will be eight months to renovate the facility so that they could move into it. The amount of number of communities that they served, Westcom said they serve four, and at the present time, Wilbraham said they serve one. The administrators, both were knowledgeable, open, personable, responsive to every question we asked, and seemed to be cooperative. Like they would, you know, give you the service that you that you needed. The supervision was a big issue that I zeroed in on. Westcom has a quality assurance supervisor, and this is a person who checks all of their calls, and they have to get a 90% rating on the document that they use in order to get a raise. And Wilbraham didn't mention any supervision of that nature. Now, they may have something or he may just, my my impression was that the the man that's in charge would just sort of walk around and see what was going on, but he didn't say one way or the other. So they may have a person that does the same thing. The other thing that Westcom mentioned that they had was they have a training provider, and they mandate that all of their dispatchers do 35 hours of training a year, and they provide the training. So and they have to, this is this is a requirement of keeping the job that they have. And that, again, was was not mentioned by Wilbraham. So that was it. I thought it was. I thought they were. I thought it was. They were good tours, and they were meaningful, and it was good to have seen them. Mr. Markle.
I agree. I, you know, I. No, I agree completely. I think in both cases, what we saw was a very professional operation. Wilbraham was very impressive, very, very well organized, I thought. I agree with Selectman Glover that Westcom is a bit cramped, simply because they have six dispatchers in one large room, but nevertheless, they need space, and I think they realize that, and they're they're going to be moving. I was interested that the way Westcom does it is that they assign a dispatcher for a couple of towns. So in other words, if you're dispatch, you don't dispatch for all five or six towns, you dispatch for one or two. If it's a city, I guess the city of Chickaby would be one person, but I noticed that some of those dispatchers, I'd say, well, what are you doing? And they said, well, I do, you know, I do East Long Meadow and who knows, Long Meadow, something like that. So in effect, special is that they're specialized, which I think, at least in my mind, offset some of the criticism that, you know, these people are going to be dispatching all over the region, and there's going to be more opportunity for confusion. So. No, I I think that's true. I think they were both up to date in terms of their equipment, very modern, very professional. And frankly, I'm not sure you can go wrong with any any decision.
The other thing that we I noticed was that they had hired two new dispatchers, I think it was two, and they had the dispatcher and a trainer that that sat with that that new person, even though the person had had been a dispatcher someplace else, to train them to their routine. And there was a lot of close supervision. I did notice that. And that's why it was so, one of the reasons it was so crowded is you had these extra people sitting there.
Yeah, crowded in an older building, too. I mean, clearly, the Chickaby PD building is 15 years old, probably. Whereas the the Wilbraham Police Station, I don't know how old it is, but it was very new, seemed very new. I think that's.
Tony, can you unmute?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great.
I have a couple of questions. One is on the training. Do you is is it a required? The state regulations require a certain amount of training every year?
So the state for a single piece app is 16 hours, which all of our dispatchers, part-time and full-time complete. I'm the training coordinator there. We do have one dispatcher that's a certified telecommunications officer, and I have two more starting training for that in the beginning of January. So they'll be certified by APCO to train dispatchers. I also have a dispatcher that's attending the Communication Center Management Course, which is a state grant. It's a leadership grant that's given to the state to five dispatchers every year in the Commonwealth, and he'll be flying down to Jacksonville, Florida to receive the two weeks of training. This is the same training that I went to back in 2017, and it's a great training for anybody that's aspiring to be a manager in a communication center. Also, the QA QI for EMD, that's also mandated by the state. Every piece app that performs EMD has to go by those standards. So Westcom does it, Wilbraham does it. Other departments have to do it as well, so they have to keep a high standard for EMD. So that's across the board, across the state. That's how they do it.
And do you have any kind of rating system for raises, or how do you do that? Or is it just to go to negotiate a contract?
So the dispatchers' union has a contract with the town that they negotiate with every three years. They took a one-year for this year ending June 30th because of the pandemic, and they'll be negotiating again for fiscal year '22, probably starting in a few months.
Okay. Thank you. I have to. I have to tell you that I've spoken to several of our police officers and some of our fire people, and they've were very complimentary of your operation whenever they dealt with you and the professionalism of your your members. So I think it's a testament not only to them, but to you as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I I'm lucky enough to have some of the highest-trained dispatchers in the Commonwealth. We go above and beyond for training, so if there's any dispatcher training that they want to go above and beyond the 16 hours, I have no problem for them going to the training. It's been tougher this year because everything is remote, but I I encourage training. If they want to do more than 16 hours, they are absolutely allowed to do more than 16 hours. So training is a big thing for me. It's you can never be trained.
I I was reading this, the state 911 newsletter. And I think if I understand it correctly, that the state is going to train people so that they can train, so they're going to train people to train people using Zoom during the pandemic.
Yep. So that's for centers that don't have or that hire dispatchers that are untrained. They'll take people in off the street, and then one or two people in that center will have to be trained by the state to be able to train the dispatchers up to the level that they need to get started and working in the seat and starting to take calls. So yes, we don't do that in Wilbraham because when I usually hire people, everybody's already trained up to the standards that I need. Some will need EMD training, which is no issue. The state usually pays for that. And again, that's for more for centers that have people that are hired off of the street. And again, I hire people that are usually have experience already.
All right. Did any questions?
No, but I would I would reiterate the compliments you gave to Mr. Gentile because I was telling him at the time when we met that I was at getting gas for my car, and a man came out and said, I understand the dispatcher was up. And this Tony Gentile is absolutely fabulous and does a fabulous job. And I told him that privately, but I should, all the people on Zoom should should be aware of that, too, that he comes with high accolades for his professionalism and his the quality of his service.
I I appreciate that. And and if I can say that, again, if this were to come to fruition, it would be great if we could work together. I'm really excited to start this if that's what the board decides to do. High level of professionalism would be had by both towns, and nobody would get any less service if we did this.
Thank you. Which brings me to the board. Wouldn't you want to make a decision, folks?
One major concern, I think Mary Ellen's expressed it before, I really want to nail down the, I want to say governance or the arbitration or the management. I think that really needs to be solidified. Other than that, I think the financial part, Don, you've done a very good job of codifying the different financial parts of both Wilbraham, Westcom, and, to be honest, not not making a change. The pressure's on the town and the board. That's why we brought this up. The bills are high. We could do nothing and keep paying the taxes we pay now. Are we going to get better service? And that's a question for us. But I think the management, the input is a key thing here. We don't want to cede our authority. Want to make sure, as Mary Ellen said, we have a seat at the table and our concerns are considered.
The other the other thing, we did get a newsletter or a printout from the police chief from the Police Executive Research Forum, okay, giving information on dispatch organizations. And it says, among other things, that consolidation of all 911 services across multiple jurisdictions is going to be encouraged by the state, and there are going to be multiple jurisdictions, not just one or two. So that's where they're headed. And so I have a concern that, what do we know will happen down the road? Who knows? You don't. You can't predict what happened down the road. My second concern is that with the police chief leaving, is this a good time to make a transition? Because who will answer the questions? And no transition goes completely smoothly. So when those questions arise, the acting chief, I suppose, would make the decisions. But then he's sort of tying the new chief's hands to his decisions, whether the new chief would agree with them or not agree with them, or who knows? So I think that that makes it a little more complicated to me in my mind.
And might actually go the other way. You might say the new guy coming in has one less worry on his plate. He doesn't have to worry about dispatch. Okay, thank you. He just has to run the police officers. Six one, half dozen the other.
I did speak with the police chief today. He said that although he's transitioning to another job, that he's not going anywhere. He still lives in Wilbraham. And that, you know, if I have questions or want to know something, he'll still be available by phone, so.
Well, if the radio system is any any indication of how long things take, you better be living here a long time because that hasn't gone so smoothly.
I had a call today from the installer. It's really, it's spectrum. They are just operating like snails, and that's a holdup. I know that we haven't, I guess, we could question whether or not the company doing the installation is working or has been working in the past as vigorously as they should. But now I think they're on the ball. They're keeping in touch with us, and they really want to get it done, so.
I imagine they use the fiber beats right now as a group, you know.
Which brings me to my point of not paying the bill.
It does give you some leverage.
Yeah.
Gets their attention.
When do you want to make a decision on this? Because we have budgets to prepare. We have people's negotiations. We have people's careers and livelihoods on the line here, and they have a right to know what the situation is.
I think it's concurrent with our talks with whoever we have coming in for interim chief, et cetera. We need to make sure that that person is comfortable with our decision. We know that Chief Farnsworth is. But again, I think, as Mary Ellen said, you want to tie that person's hands to our thing without making sure they're in lockstep with us, and I think that's important. Conversely, I think we're going to be working on that and get that wrapped up in the next couple of weeks, I would hope, because Jeff is, you know, leaving. So I think setting an aggressive timetable for a new chief is something we have to work on. And I think that'd be concurrent with the dispatch decision. I see both things happening, finishing up right after the first of the year, in my mind. If you're talking the 16th is his last day. We have to be talking about interim chief appointed before that.
Any other comments on it? All right.
Can I ask that we interrupt the schedule here? I do have something on my report, one I am having to do with the municipal vulnerability program. We did receive this information. And over the past week, they did do a watershed assessment. They met, as Obama was with the engineers, as well as our highway superintendent. Selectman Glover and I were on our trips to Wilbraham and Westcom. But I guess that was a productive meeting. I've been on two Zoom calls with them last week. And the next step is going to be engaging town officials as well as the public as widely as possible so that the planning can include areas of town where there is vulnerability to severe weather that they might not be aware of. I mean, we're all aware of the flooding problem on East Main Street, but there may be other areas where weather has been or is likely a major factor. Farmers, for example, they would like to, they'd like to know that and incorporate that into their plan. And and so we would like to, in January, we've agreed that on the 21st and the 28th, we will have two sessions and make every effort to engage the whole community, robo-call, website, and all that, to get people to convey to them any concerns they have about severe weather in the future doing damage to their interest or their property. And while we have Mary Goinehan here, and I believe we had Steve Tyler, the engineer, in case you have any questions about what we're doing.
I've been on a couple of calls with both these, Mary and Stephen. Thank you for being here. The bigger thing is that we do have a hazard mitigation plan that was done by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission a few years back. And I think you've done a good job of merging that into your consideration here. The town actually has a surprising number of dams, I think many more than people would would realize, and bridges as well. I think, Bob, it's hit the nail on the head. We had the huge flood in 2005, really separated the town with the flooding both at the park and the flooding at Lavingbrook and East Main Street. The problem at the park was mitigated by the fact that we upgraded the covert there with a repair so that the water is not accumulating like it was. The problem in East Main Street hasn't gone away. We certainly would appreciate your help on that. Because I think if you look at the hazard mitigation, that was one of the top two or three areas of concern at that time, along with, I think, the potential failure of the dam on, oh, gosh, Tonview, I think, was a concern. You know, that would be a huge rush downhill. So anything you can do, I think I look forward to the public outreach part.
The schedule is that they will have the plan ready by April, which is then timely for the town to apply for grant money to address the problems, the structural problems. And so that's that's where we are in this process.
Is the mitigation money available? Maybe a second phase at the same time, because that's on the travel.
Is the is the public input part, tell me how that goes. What is there?
They're going to have sessions. I guess we're going to be limited to Zoom in January. They're going to have sessions. I guess we're going to be limited to Zoom in January, two days, 28th, and quite a bit of time set aside. And my responsibility is to mobilize everyone in town who would have some interest in what's being done and who would be able to convey information as to problems that they might not be aware of in the planning process. They want to make sure that the plan's comprehensive and that all potential problems with severe weather in town are addressed.
Mary or Steve, you have the ad? I'm mute, Mary.
Mary is muted. Hold it, Mary.
There we go. You got me now?
Yeah.
All right. So what the plan is, is as Bob noted, on January 21st and the 28th, we have to comply with the grant requirements, that there is the key to the program, an eight-hour community resilience building workshop. And that's a lot of hours when you have to go Zoom. So, the workshop ideally includes invited participants that represent infrastructure, which is public works, ConCom planning, others in the community, society that could be impacted by climate change, and that would include anyone that's responsible for, let's say, your council on aging, or any elderly housing, or any rest facilities or in the community that, you know, may have seniors because of flooding or other issues that could be put at risk as a result of, as a result of climate change. And then we want the folks that represent environmental concerns, if you have any local environmental associations, Mass Autobonds already on the team. So, these two dates will represent an opportunity to hear both about what the town of Hampden has already been doing. You already brought up your hazard mitigation plan, and yes, that's an excellent document that serves as the foundation of this, and we build off of that. And then hear from, as Bob noted, members of the agricultural community, members that represent those sectors that I just noted, that say, "Hey, by the way, these are things we become worried about as a result of," whether it's extreme temperature change, the storm events, all of those issues associated with climate change, so that their needs become known. And then, at the end of this, and the public is invited to participate and input, we're working on a format right now that would allow them to go into a map of the town to identify, "Hey, we know that there's a problem here, and this is what occurs." But ultimately, what you're doing is you're prioritizing, what do we need to do first? What are our top actions? And those are the actions that you're going to move forward with, looking for potential grant assistance in order to implement them. I've learned after doing 23 of these already that you have social and you have environmental threats that are serious and important, but in many cases, addressing those infrastructure threats, improving your infrastructure, the culverts that you talked about, the dams and the bridges, actually reduce those threats to society and the environment. So that's what we're going to be doing moving forward on the 21st and the 28th, and there'll be another component that will be kind of at the schedule of those members of the community that want to contribute to the discussion online.
Thank you. Steve, Gary, the ad?
Yes, please. Please.
Then I'd also point out that having this plan will enable the town to go ahead of the line when we apply for funds for the small bridge program. And that bridge on East Main Street is in poor condition. We noticed a lot of concrete falling and so forth, and it's got to either be repaired thoroughly or replaced. And Mark said that it does comply with the dimensions that are required under the small bridge program. So, there we are. So.
Am I unmuted now?
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm on. Okay. So, yes, certainly, above and beyond the MVP, we are doing the add-on where we're looking at the Main Street flooding and certainly looking at the culvert and the bridge. And we'll, you know, help you pursue those funding. We are aware it's eligible for the small bridge program, and the other culvert is eligible for the DER culvert replacement program, and it probably would rank fairly high because of its environmental considerations. In referring to the upcoming meetings on the 21st and the 28th, those are not your traditional open public meetings. Those are where we're trying to get the people that are interested and can provide the most value to the town on this subject matter to us for input. That's not to say that you can't fight the public, but it's not a traditional open public meeting. We're trying to get all constructive comments. Things such as budget aren't a factor during these meetings. It's really about identifying those priorities, and then ultimately, the recommendations and so forth of the report will speak to potential for available funding. Those are the couple of key points I wanted to add. Did I strike anything in your memory there, Mary, to add to?
No, that was excellent. The idea that we're looking at those key stakeholders from infrastructure, environment, and society concerns to contribute what their concerns are. And then the public is clearly going to have plenty of opportunities to both comment on that and through, you know, we're working on it now, an online mapping system that can add additional comments that will be taken into consideration for the priorities that have been established.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're going to, we have to go and zoom into the Wilbraham Selectmen's meeting at 7 o'clock. So we're going to say goodbye to you and thank you, and we'll follow up later on.
So one last thing is consider who you want in the community invited to participate in those two workshops.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Okay. On behalf of the Board of Health, we have two variances that I'm going to bring to your attention. 33 Weir Road, a reduction in separation between the SAS and the high groundwater from five feet to four feet. I would make a motion to enact that.
Make a motion to approve that reduction as recommended by the health agent.
Second.
In favor?
Aye. And the second one is at 46 Brookside Drive, a reduction in setback to existing well and property less than 100 feet, but greater than 50 feet. The proposed setback is 65 feet.
Motion to approve the variance as recommended by the health agent.
Second.
In favor?
Aye. Thank you.
How do we do this now?
Okay, I'm going to close out this meeting, and those who want to join the meeting with the Selectmen in Wilbraham will find the code on the town website.
And there'll be further discussion there with dispatch for people who are asking. Right. We're going to, we're going to get to come back to our meeting and go into executive session.
So do you have anything besides executive session, or should we close the regular meeting and just go to executive session now?
We have, well, we have the town administrator's report. We have...
We've talked about some of it already.
All right. So we're going to come back to this meeting, open it for a short period of time to go into executive session, in which we will come out of executive session to adjourn the meeting. So we're going to, we're going to recess the meeting and go to this Wilbraham Selectmen.
Do you want to entertain a motion for executive session?
Go ahead.
Dean O'Bent here. Is Ed coming to our meeting?
No.
No.
This is just a meeting.
With the chair, I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
Second.
John, aye?
Donald, aye?
Mary, aye.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, without a return to open session.
Without a return to open session.
So, thank you all.
Thank you all. Have a merry Christmas, go over at left time. Have a merry Christmas and a happy new year, and be safe.